Do I have the bad seat?
No.
No, I don't.
Don't.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Apologies for being a few minutes late. Welcome to tonight's Select Board meeting, May 22, 2003. We are just coming out of an executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 333 Andover Street in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A6, and to ratify, validate, and confirm votes taken at the April 29, 2023 emergency meeting and further for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 1 and the International Association of Firefighters Local 1370 in accordance with MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A3, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. At this time, I'd ask you all to stand if you can for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, I am going to hand it over to Select Board Member Greg Bendel for a moment of silence for Scott C. Garant. Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like many in the community, we are very saddened to learn of the recent passing of Scott Garant, longtime resident who did so very much for our community and was also a past member of this board. And tonight, we wanted to acknowledge his passing and recognize his life before we began tonight's meeting. Scott, for many of you know, was a longtime resident who served in a number of different volunteer roles, including youth soccer committee. He was a former member of this board, the planning board. He was the longtime chairman of the Fourth of July. I refer to him as the architect of the current Fourth of July celebration that we have here in town. He served on the master planning committee. He was the 2016 recipient of the Good Guy Award, and after that, worked on the Good Guy Committee with many others. So, we want to offer our sincerest condolences to Scott's family and friends, and I hope he'll join us all now. In a moment of silence for Scott C. Garant. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the transmitting of Treasury warrant number 202345, 202345 W.I.R.E.S., 45A, 202346, 202346 W.I.R.E.S., and 46A.
So moved.
Second.
Make a motion.
All in favor? So moved, okay. Sorry, just wanted to... The approval of minutes? There are no minutes to approve, so we'll move on to appointments. First up, we have Lawrence I.F. Evans, Doodle Sack LLC regarding public hearing relative to the request of Doodle Sack LLC DBA Cucina La Rosa to obtain an all alcohol license for a restaurant for property located at 228 Main Street. Are the parties here? If you are, if you could please come to the table and just introduce yourselves, please? Yeah. Do I have it? I apologize, I don't have the public meeting information, so Mr. Hell's gonna go grab that.
Want the package?
No, it's for the public meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Call it to order. Thank you, though. Sorry for that.
Everybody's been patiently waiting for you to reopen.
I know.
I know.
I've been patiently waiting.
We want you to reopen.
Things moved forward.
It was a slow process.
We wanted to be in there by May, but just everything is just...
Backed up.
You take four months, is now six.
Yeah, for sure.
Are you related to Benny, Kyra, and Bill Ricka?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you all for your patience, apologies for that. All right, so I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for purpose of considering an application for an all alcohol license as described. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. So, the public hearing is now open. All right. So, comments will be limited to the subject of the application. And I'm gonna start with the two of you. If you could just introduce yourselves and if you have anything to say to the board, feel free.
Well, we've been in the town six years, we've had a pace.
Actually, hold on, do you want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Sure.
Seven years ago, we sat in front of this board, and we opened up a small little takeout spot, which was 211 Main Street, which was in Wilmington Crossing. And we got through COVID, and Panera opened up, and Market Basket let us sit on it for a year and a half. And here we are, we're ready to open the doors, it's 100 seats, and I got a lot of good stuff going on in there.
Well, we can't wait, that's for sure.
This is my father, Lawrence, this is my mother, Rosalie.
Okay.
And I'm Jason, I'm the operator.
That's where the Rosalie comes from.
Larry and Rosalie.
And I'll be the manager of the liquor license, I'll be the general manager.
Okay, great, thank you. I will open it up to the board if you'd like to say a few words. We'll start down with Mr. West if you have any comments or questions.
I don't have any actual questions, but looking forward to hopefully the board approving everything and seeing you guys open.
And we're not gonna be like open wild hours till midnight, 1:00 in the morning, that's not the type of business. It's gonna be a family restaurant with...
We'll do 10 on Friday and Saturday, Greg, right?
But, you know, we're not gonna be there till midnight, 2:00 in the morning to make noise in the neighborhoods for the, you know, the folks behind, it's not gonna be that type of atmosphere.
Okay, great. Gary?
Where are we supposed to go after our board meetings?
Well, we'll have a...
We have a banquet room meeting.
You can go higher.
We'll do 10 on weekends.
There you go.
I wanna wish you the best of luck. When you had your business across the street, your food was always very good quality, very tasty, and I look forward to you opening up as soon as possible, and just the best of luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for, you know, continuing to have your business here. Wilmington obviously has a great reputation in the town, and I do want to offer one story. You mentioned off-hours, but it wouldn't be unlike you to serve somebody off-hours. We've heard plenty of stories in the neighborhoods about you helping out our police, fire, and DPW during snowstorms and during the middle of the night, so it doesn't go unnoticed, and we greatly appreciate all you do for our community. So, thank you and good luck.
We like it here.
I echo my colleagues' remarks and can't wait for you to reopen, just grateful.
We have employees, we actually have employees waiting to come back to work.
Well, that's wonderful news, that doesn't happen still a lot places, so that's great.
We've also been paying them.
Well...
A couple of them, but we're doing, you know, we got them in there doing some...
No, of course.
They're helping us all help us.
That's one way to keep them.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, I agree, we're still looking forward to it. And were you somewhere before you came to Wilmington?
Yes, I opened up in Bill Ricka in 2015 on 129, the little pizza shop I took over that was failing, and I turned into a business.
Nice, I knew I had heard of it prior to you guys coming in here, so that's why...
That it wasn't a good location, but when Wilmington became available, we hadn't found a spot, we grabbed it.
Well, I know, everybody's looking forward to you guys reopening, so we're excited.
Thank you.
We'll be doing breakfast, lunch, and dinner, by the way.
Wonderful.
And brunch on Sunday.
Yeah, oh, that's, oh, that's gonna be, that's gonna be packed, I'm sure, even more so. Okay, before we go on to Mr. Hell, who did that? And Beverly, you have received the certified receipts and green cards, great. And now, I'll turn over to Mr. Hell for recommendations and any information you'd like to offer.
So, in terms of recommendations, I have the Police Chief, Joseph Desmond. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends an alcohol license at the following establishment, Doodle Sack LLC, 228 Main Street, Wilmington. Also have a recommendation from the Building Inspector Al Spalding. The building department has no issues with the issuance of the all alcohol license for the above referenced establishment.
All right, is anybody in the audience want to offer any comments related to this? I'm gonna guess no, 'cause there's... Okay, then I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the application for the all alcohol license as presented.
Actually, before you do that, I guess I would ask that the board entertain the following motion, which would be that I move that the Select Board approve the application of Doodle Sack LLC DBA Cincia La Rosa for a license to serve all alcohol beverages, that all alcohol beverages in a restaurant to be located at 228 Main Street, and further, that a determination is made that the license is not detrimental to the spiritual activities of the church located on Bridge Lane or educational activities of the preschool daycare located on Main Street.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
But, with discussion?
Yes, please.
I was confused on that. I've never seen a statement like this on any alcohol licenses that we've presented before. Is it because of the proximity to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, any establishment that's within a certain number of feet of an educational facility or church organization, there's, needs to be that language disclaimer.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, so we had a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, so moved. And we will now move on to, you can sit there for this one, too. Our next appointment is Lawrence I.F. Evans, Doodle Sack LLC, in regards, relative to the request of Doodle Sack LLC DBA Cucina La Rosa to obtain a common victualer license for a restaurant for property located at 228 Main Street. Do we have any discussion? Any... You can go ahead, Jeff, to the recommendations.
Recommendations, again, we have a recommendation from Shelley Newhouse, the Health Director. The Health Department has no issues with the issuance of the common victualer at this location. And then, similarly, the Building Inspector Al Spalding, the Department has no issues with the issuance of the common victualer license.
Moved to grant the request?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Best of luck, we can't wait for opening day. Keep us posted.
We're gonna tell everybody that you want them to move faster.
Yes.
Do you have a moving date yet, an opening date?
So, let's see, everything went, everything went up on the roof today, so the plumber's in there, he started today, the hoods are hung, we got the electric will be done after that, and then...
There's always pickups.
We're gonna paint it, clean it, paint it, and...
Open up the doors.
Let Shelley come in and look around and open the doors.
Awesome.
Can't wait.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Probably somewhere between six and eight weeks.
Good luck.
Yeah, best of luck.
Hopefully five, I'm pushing for five.
I like that.
I am too. Thank you.
All right, best of luck, thank you for waiting. All right, our next appointment, George Hooper, Public Buildings Superintendent, and Daniel Palata, Owners Project Manager, regarding update on town school administration and senior center projects. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. So, with me tonight, I have our OPM, Daniel Palata, myself. We prepared a presentation for both the senior center and the town hall, school admin project. The first one will be the senior center, which we'll review. See if I can get this to go. This is the front of the building, 18,000 square foot. All right, I'm gonna have Dan kind of explain the whole process here.
I knew I was gonna get thrown into it eventually. Go easy on me tonight. So, if you all remember, as we went through the process, and I know we have a new member of the board, congratulations on your election, we, you know, we went through a feasibility study and a schematic design study to determine what they needed, and what program spaces did they need, what order did they need to be in, what needs to be next to certain things, and that was the feasibility study and schematic design. All of the programmatic needs were voted on by the committee, so the committee guided the architect and the OPM through the process.
Also, we dealt directly with the director and the committee that they had over at the senior center, so for each programming need.
The site, next to St. Dorothy's, this is the final layout of the site. We're currently working through permitting with the Department of Transportation for the curb cut on the Main Street Route 38, and we have 165 parking spaces, outdoor activities in the rear of the building, and a walking path around the site, as well as we're anticipating full pickleball courts.
What he didn't mention, also positioning of the building when we're designing with the architect, the layout to take advantage of the ambient of the sun, the way everything picks up. We've reviewed this also with our Community Development Group, which will be meeting again. So, they made some suggestions, we've done some changes, and we'll bring it back to them.
In design development, we decided to go with a VRF, Very Energy Efficient Electric System for the building. The building is also gonna be over insulated, above and beyond the current code requirements, so that you're gonna have an extremely thermal building while continually changing the air in the building two to three times an hour. The VRF system allows for heating and cooling at the same time, so in the swing seasons, when they're having classes and they're gonna be hot and need cooling, but the rest of the building does not, this allows that to occur. And it uses the same electricity and gases on supply and return for that, to accomplish that. So, instead of dumping cooling away in the summer, in the winter when you're heating, and dumping heat away in the winter, you're actually using bolts, which is extremely efficient in the swing seasons. We're gonna have a SIP roof system, which is a sandwich system of very thick polyisocyanate, almost like a styrofoam, between two pieces of plywood, which will allow us to have less structure and greater spans. And the roof system itself is designed to accommodate solar for the future. So, if you wanna load the building up with solar, you can, as the chairman had indicated, we did design the building such so that it would catch the sun on the southern side.
Trying to get away from the fossil fuels, you know, moving towards energy efficiency, I'm gonna give you some explanation on what a VRF is.
Sorry.
That's a variable refrigerant flow as it goes through, and then the BMS is the building's management system. This will help the operation of the building to maintain it at a full efficiency.
Yeah, the building will be turned off when it's not used, essentially, so that we're not heating the building to high temperatures or cooling it when the building is not being used.
And the SIP, as he referred to, is a structural insulated panel that'll be on the roof, which also improves the R factor in the efficiency of the building.
You're pretty good.
This is the front view of the entry. It's changed a little over time, as you've been involved a little, you've seen how we used to have a flat roof, and it's kind of, it's morphed into this new design that we This is the foyer, as you come in, off to the right-hand side. There's not a lot of detail and color in here yet, once we get that palette up, but on the right-hand side will be the admin, and as you can walk straight through, you'll be able to go out into the patio area. And off of this will be the large dining room or the main function room, and then the hallway to the rest of the facility.
Yeah, you reversed it.
Okay.
So, the doors to the right of the function room. It's okay. So, this is the rear, this is the rear, this is looking from the rear of the building, trellis out the back, once again, just to provide shade for those that don't wanna be in shade. There's also gonna be a bocce court and a trellis by the bocce court, also to provide shade. So, we're kinda trying to do as minimal landscaping as possible, municipalities, we have a hard time keeping, you know, taking care of landscaping, but we're gonna have hardy native plants that will survive in this climate, you know? We're not letting the architect or the landscape engineer give us some wild plant that comes, you know, from Aruba. So, we're gonna make sure we get the right plants.
So, this view here, if you're facing the building in the front, you'd come around to the right.
Yep.
So, I'm gonna show you an overhead view, this is what I was talking about, you're coming around this way.
And there's a trellis, and the bocce court.
So, this gives you the overhead view from the street of what that back patio area is gonna look like. These are plants here, around the side, the bocce court being here, the pergola, is this the correct location for the pergola?
I was just gonna ask that.
You know, I think it moves up a little, but...
Yeah, it does.
Right, the pergola here, and then a shaded space. So, again, this is just an animation of what it's going to be once the details...
That's the street view, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
This is the street, so 30...
You're standing on the street.
Right.
But up above 30 feet.
So, this here is gonna be a fly-through, it's gonna kind of give you an idea what it's gonna look like as we go through the building. So, again, it is just an animation, so the colors are still not quite in place yet.
I think it's loading.
George, it's gonna be like a Disney ride?
Kind of, you didn't have to pay for a ticket, though.
VR.
Okay. So, we've completed design development, and we've been working on construction documents. This is the phase where we actually detail every nut, bolt, screw, every hinge, so that bidders can fully understand how the building goes together, and we expect that to be completed sometime in the end of June, early July, and we'll go straight into bidding. We expect bidding to be completed by the end of August. Depending on the amount of bidders, we may extend it into September a little bit. Our goal is to get, you know, the best price and the maximum amount of people to bid the project. We have begun what's called pre-qualification, because this project trips the pre-qualification rules in Massachusetts, Chapter 149. We, through the procurement department, have begun the pre-qualification process and are starting to get our interest forms in from the subcontractors and the general contractors that will be working on the project. As a public project, we bid 16 trades first, and then two weeks later, we bid the general contractors, and the general contractors must pull their 16 trades from the pool of contractors that bid two weeks prior. The pool of contracts that bid first are called filed subbidders, you'll hear us talk a lot about that as we move forward, and, but we only have a contract with the general contractor, which is responsibility to work with the subcontractors, even though it's our responsibility to bid them. So, it's a unique system we have in Massachusetts, we're the only state that really does it this way, 'cause we do everything the right way in Massachusetts. The other 49 states are wrong, so, so it has nothing to do with the cost of our buildings being so expensive. So, that's it for the senior center?
No, no, we got a little bit more.
Oh, I'm sorry, keep going.
Yeah, so tomorrow, Wednesday night, we actually have another meeting, and we're following up with the designer, kind of looking at cost estimates going through this, because for this project, as Dan had stated, we're trying to stay on time and stay on budget, that's most important to get through this, so our construction can be completed by, we estimated 2024, December is when we're estimating that?
Yep. Okay. I'll go on to have Christmas there.
The committee has met 33 times, we've produced videos regarding current deficiencies at our current senior center, we've hosted four community information sessions, and all this information, including our updated newsletter, is on the town website. So, if you go to the town website, click on the projects, you can see the projects that are there. You can click on the senior center, and it'll give you all that information. This is part of our outreach, Dan, if you want...
I mean, it's pretty much the same as we discussed the last time we're here, we're producing information when there's information to produce. It's hard to produce information when you're in construction documents, because there's not really much to discuss, so that, you know, the next newsletter for the senior center will probably be announcing that we've gone to bid, and the newsletter after that will probably, will be announcing who the board of select have recommended for a contract.
All right.
Questions on this?
Sure, we do have questions.
Can you go back to the second slide, way back to the beginning?
Test my skills there now.
Yeah, yeah.
Second slide.
Right there.
Yep.
Go forward, there you go.
Yep.
Thank you. And I've brought this up at a few meetings in the past, and I know you've probably addressed this issue, but the, and the neighbors on the far right-hand side, they're going to be facing with a dumpster for, I know you're calling it something...
Yeah, we call it refuse dumpster.
Yeah. I mean, I've mentioned this several times, if I were that neighbor, I really wouldn't be a happy camper, and I've always mentioned, could you move it down to the left side, closer to where you have the kitchen and the dining room, so that people aren't going across the whole parking lot? It's a little, yeah, where your arrows, and then go down further, go down...
Go down this way?
Yeah, or over to the left a little bit more, to your left.
This way?
Yeah, and then down.
All right, this is where the handicap vans and the parking are going to be, so...
I just...
I mean, something we can look at, I mean...
You did bring it up, one of them.
And I know we did discuss it, because there is, there is a buffer here of trees that are going to be planted and try to keep what's there, and then there is a containment that'll be around it, so you really won't see it.
After about a... After about two months, the fencing will probably be kept open. But whatever, I just, you know what?
You know, we can, we can take that under advisement, take a look at it.
I do.
What you got to do, but I just think...
There is a residence, there is a residence on this side, too, that's not shown on the, on the picture, Kevin. And the, and the tree line there, after we clear the trees, the trees that are there are sparse, like scrawny pines. And we are concerned about the bottom of the canopy, so, you know, we'll take a look at that.
Even on the far left, as you enter Main Street, maybe. I don't, but I know you need to, because there is parking there where the truck could probably access in. I'm talking about now on the, on the other side of the...
Over here?
Yeah, over there. But to the left now, George, heading to Main Street.
On this area?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of, so things we look at, you know, things we look at is when the service trucks come in, also the fire department for turrets and the DPW for snowplowing. So there was a lot of consideration.
Yeah, there may be nothing you can do, but I just thought I'd...
We'll take another look at it, though. Before it's built, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions on this site?
No.
Yeah.
If I could, thank you, gentlemen. There was some talk at one point about a shed potentially being on the exterior. Any, did that ever go any further, a storage shed on the, on the site?
For mowing and snow blowers?
We do have a maintenance room, a closet there for the snow blower stuff and some of the equipment. And the DP, parks and grounds will bring their equipment in, so, but I don't think anything will be left on site.
First, thank you both, gentlemen. It looks like a great design. And one question I have is that as far as patio area for, I know sometimes they have cookouts and things like that, is, is there sufficient space to do something like that?
In that large hardscape area? Or I would think so.
I, I, you, you bring up a good point, because we originally had a lot more raised planners, and they're raised so they're handicapped accessible. And they pushed for the space rather than the planners. So we, we cut back on the planners to make more space. Right now, they're, they seem to think that they have enough space for the events that they're going to have. The director's very happy with the layout and the positioning of everything on the site at this point.
And we, we built it so we could expand different programming needs.
Right, okay. Yeah, like, like, again, I was just thinking that now we're getting into that good weather, and, you know, everybody and their brother's doing a burger burn, so they might do something similar at the senior center at some point.
Absolutely.
One more question. On your exterior, are these cement bricking, bricks that you're putting in for walkways? Or is it just solid cement?
It's concrete. It's concrete, poured concrete for the walkways. The patio has some stamped concrete. We'll have some sort of a design to it.
I was just, I was just curious with all the new materials they're using for things like that now. Not so much in the plastics, but you see a lot of new materials they're using for wear, and I was just curious about those.
I'm, I'm not going to be worried about the concrete wear. Believe me. We, we are, we did have a bit of a debate on what the concrete should look like. And unfortunately, the more you play around with patents and different materials, walkers can get hung up. So we, we kind of all agreed that it would be best for the, for the liability reasons to make it a concrete patio.
Thank you.
And the argument of the building.
Yes.
Question, if I can, if you go back to the aerial of the entire site, the pickleball courts in the northern part of this map, are those going to be lit?
Yes, they're going to be illuminated. We're going to have four of them, so there's going to be four courts.
Will there be an emergency call box of some sort up there?
We talked, Greg, we talked about that. Haven't seen the final drawings to see if it's on, on the drawings, but we did talk about having an emergency call box at that end of the, of the...
Typical to what we have at the high school. Yeah.
Last question, if I can, is, will there be any type of water fountain there? Is that going to be, are we running water out there to accommodate?
I don't plan, think we plan for water.
Can I do a follow-up on that? Are there going to be handicap spaces out there in that area? You know...
I, to be honest with you, Kevin, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but I do know that we did discuss spreading handicap spaces out for walkers. I just, this is a, this is more of a presentation drawing and not an actual construction document, so I, I can't tell you whether there's two spaces there or not, but we'll make a note of it.
It will meet the required needs if there's handicap.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, there's, there's no reason why they can't be, that's for sure.
I have a question on the pickleball courts. Are those going to be fenced in so they can be locked? Or, I'm just asking, because obviously...
Yeah, it's very similar to what we have over here.
Okay, yep. Mr. Hill, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
All right, any further questions on this? Then we can move on to the school project.
All right. The town hall won't be, is that a different phase? Won't be as elaborate as the senior center?
It's getting there. It's not there yet. It's always traveled a little behind the senior center, and that will continue all the way to the end.
And that's okay.
All right, you want to bring this?
So, same, same concept, feasibility and schematic design. We met with all of the departments. We met with the school department. We went through the needs of what each of the departments needed. And we've come up with adjacencies and storage needs and program vertical and horizontal sorting. A lot of back and forth on what room goes next to what room. Kevin participated in a lot of those arrangements of rooms. And we're trying to get as much natural light into the building as we can. The entrance is pretty well prominent, so that if you're driving up to the building, you're going to know where the entrance is. And we have plenty of the space for whatever you're going to call the building when it's done, town hall, school administration, whatever. So we wanted to make sure that there was an adequate presence, because it's going to, it's going to be a presence on the, on the green. Again, three hundred parking spaces, not including the spaces behind the buzzell and the new building, the new building. Right now is, we've got a flat roof in the back, a roof in the front, to try and mimic what we have across the street with the town hall. We're taking our cues from the town hall. I'm sorry, high school, thank you. Town hall's taking its cues from the high school in material color and in shape and form, but not replicating the high school. So this building will have its own identity, but yet it'll, it'll, it'll be able to blend in with the high school.
One of the other things, they're trying to keep it low profile, so when you're coming from that side of the jury lane, school street area, you're not going to see this giant building.
It's only two stories from the back.
And we're able to increase an additional fifty-three parking spaces. This does not include the parking spots at the buzzell. So, in keeping the swing green, so the students will be parking up in this area. They estimated a hundred and forty parking spaces for the town hall use. We have the hundred and sixty available. Also, and we have in addition the parking spots up at the senior center. It won't be called the senior center anymore after they relocate. This here is design development. This was at our last meeting. This is to give you elevations on the first floor, your, your sailing heights, and showing us our meeting hall.
Yeah, I mean, in design development, at this point, we're, we're at the point where we're, you know, trying to pick out what materials we're going to use. Again, heating and ventilation systems for the building. This building is a lot larger than the senior center, and all-electric is, is not necessarily the right way to go. All-electric on the cold, cold days will be tough for this building. So we have a hybrid system in this building that uses a little bit of VRF technology and a little bit of hydronic perimeter heating. The, you can see in this, all the storage in the back in the vault with rolling, we're going to put in rolling files, so you can maximize that vault space. So you'll be getting a lot more than you have, and we're going to have loose storage behind it for each of the departments.
What he means by that is there'll be caged areas that you'll be able to go in, and each department will be able to secure their own space. We toured multiple town halls, and this works very well.
Right. And this is like if you sliced the building at the ceiling, and you're looking into, into the building. This is a picture of the direction the main lobby's going in, a slate floor with wood trims and lots of glass to open things up.
So that's coming in this way. This is a community room. That's what's right here in front of you, right here. Off to the left is the large hearing room.
So this is the smallest of the community rooms. If you remember, you remember, at one point, Kevin, you wanted a smaller room. This is that room.
And off to the right here, just before, there's the hallway to get into, to access the rest of the building, which will be able to be isolated at nighttime, so for community use, for the hearing room, for the selectmen, the select board to meet. So they'll be able to secure the rest of the building. There won't be access.
This is the select board meeting room at seat sixty. So you'll have room at the front, and it's a little bit taller, because it's in that single stories and a half space with the large meeting room, with presentation material, you know, built in to the actual, you know, the walls and tied into your desks.
I hope there's going to be enough room for six seats up front rather than five.
Yeah.
We have five selectmen, but we have a town manager. We, so which one of us is being eliminated?
He asked for not to, see not to be there.
A seat to the side for Bev.
Yeah, that's just a rendering.
The, the width between the seats is actually greater than a normal width. And the architect is aware that this, this needs to seat six or even seven.
Seven.
We talked about that at the...
Seven with...
Yeah, with Bev on ones, yeah, that makes sense to have your...
We talked about that at, at our last meeting, because it, you know, the picture's a bit deceiving, it seems like, or certainly, you know, we need, need additional space at the front table, and then certainly space for Beverly.
To give you an idea, this room is much bigger than the room you're currently sitting in now. I know it looks a little narrower, and it's because of the height also.
Right. And we, and the height is there, so we can bring natural light in from the, from the backside. So this is into the hill. So the selectmen's meeting room is actually into the hill, so we can get light from the top.
George, with that window there, is that for WCTV?
No, that's right here.
Yeah.
That is just a panel. It's kind of like what you're looking at right now.
Oh, okay. All right. You threw me off. I thought it was a window to nowhere.
No, and, you know, there's not a lot of detail on this. Again, this is just rendering. So where the, the person is standing, there'll also be a door that you'll be able to access the larger hearing room.
It actually looks like Phil, by the way, who's the architect.
That actually is Phil.
So, you know, the fly-through you saw on the senior center, there's a zillion data points to make that work. We'll get there with this, but this building is just so much larger, and there's so many more rooms. Getting all the data points imported is, it will take more time.
Phil actually did one for us. He kind of manually worked it. We couldn't get it on to, again, to...
We tried, but we couldn't get it to work. This will be the main, the main hearing room, seats two hundred, that'll have shades that can be operated with a button, so you can close it out in case you want to show a presentation. The technology for this room is not there yet. You know, we're working on that. We did, we did take the chairman for a, a visit to see a room that looks very similar to this in Taunton. And they also had a, a meeting room almost identical to the size of your room, and it, and it felt huge. You know, it doesn't look it in the picture, but it really felt big. So we, we're pretty excited about this room, too.
I'll go back a little, so you kind of have an idea. So here we are. That's that large room. This is a select board's room here, and you'll be able to cut through. And this is where WCTV will be. And then there'll be storage in here. This spot right here is a little kitchenette, so you guys can, if you need...
So WCTV will be able to operate from both rooms without having to be in the room like they are here.
And right here is where those double doors are, so the public will be able to come in, utilize these gang bathrooms right here. They'll be open during the evening, and they can utilize this space. Of course, we can secure different areas, but none of this or any of the additional floors will be accessible, unless we want them to be.
So this is looking down, as you're heading down, with, you know, wayfinding, you know, we're going to be conscious of wayfinding signage, directions, make sure it's clear for the public to be able to get in and out and find their way around the building, as well as electronic boards like you have walking into here and meeting notice locations for the town clerk.
So as Dan mentioned, adjacency, so we'll have the clerk, we have the treasurer, collector, all kind of adjacent to each other, just to help with the flow and be able to go down. If you look down the rest, there'll be other offices down the, the end of the hall.
So we're currently, this, this project's got a different delivery method for construction other than designed, bid build, where you completely design it and receive bids. This building has the same delivery method you used for the high school, which is that we're hiring, we've hired, we've made a recommendation to hire a contract manager, construction manager, Consigly. And Consigly has, has got all their paperwork right now, and we're just waiting for the signed contracts to come back. I, as I was driving in there, I, I understood that they had three of the four signatures from corporate that they needed. They were just waiting on the fourth signature, and they'll be on board. And it's important to have them on board early on a building like this, because on this building, we are worried about supply chain. We're worried about the switchgear for the building, worried about the elevator for the building. We're worried about certain HVAC components of the building. And having the CM on board will help us determine the proper materials, not only to specify, but we can purchase early, long before the drawings are done and before the bidders have bid it. And then we're to sign the equipment to the bidder to, to install. So we're, we're excited about going with the CM at risk like you did at the high school. And we expect design development to be completed around July fourth, end of June. And then we'll be working on construction documents all the way through January. And during that period, we will be meeting with the construction manager, who also has to do an estimate. So we'll have multiple estimates from multiple different sources to keep the project on track, like the senior center, which, George, I just indicated, we have an estimate that's just come in. We do the estimates periodically to keep the project on track, to make sure the architect's not over-designing and making sure that we haven't overreached, and making sure that we stay within our appropriation and our targeted numbers. And as of right now, we're right on the button on everything, and time-wise, we're right on the button, too. We expect to have filed sub-bids somewhere around February seventh. And then on this one, after the filed sub-bids come in, we agree to what's called a GMP, which is guaranteed maximum price, which is essentially like a bid. And then construction will begin in March.
The construction manager also brings in, he'll work with us on the site. When we're talking about the Fourth of July and other activities that's going around, and how we're going to secure that area, so we'll work closely with him and the community. So anything that's going on.
Question?
Yes.
Sure. Has there been any conversations on, I'm reading a lot now on these heat pumps now they're using for heating systems? Has there been considerations about systems like that today for the town hall or the senior center?
That's what VRF...
That's what?
That's what VRF produces. It's, it's an air-to-air heat pump. You're already on it. You got that one.
Question, it sounds like looking at the hallway, if you will, that everything's going to be done, business will be done in the hallway, so to speak, right? Like, it looks like you got the hallway, and you, somebody wants to talk to the treasurer, collector, for example, they're going to stop at a certain point. There'll be a window. Is that how I'm reading that?
Except for the, the, the counters are indented, I think, eight feet, so that they're not in the hallway. They're actually going into... So that they're not in the hallway. They're actually going into the alcove to do their business and then come back out to the hallway to travel to the next stop.
No, there are opportunities for privacy. If somebody wanted to speak to, for example, the collector of taxes and wanted to talk privately, for example, about an issue, are there little side rooms?
There are small conference rooms located throughout the building for those, just those purposes, really small conference rooms. That we didn't show you a picture of, like a conference room that'll fit four people or six people. We have two or three per floor.
Yeah, because I'm just, I was just thinking of that. I'm seeing like hallway conversations and somebody wants to, you know, hey, I'm behind on my taxes and I really don't want to be talking echoing around the building.
And each, each office will have a spot for that for the department to bring somebody in. They can sit there and have discussions. Confidential.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Same with, same with public health. I mean, there's a lot of things with public health that have to be divided and we have provided those divisions.
Thank you.
We didn't go into each breakdown of the offices. We've done that in other meetings, plus meetings that'll be coming up once we get more into the detail. I didn't want to go through this. We'd be going all night.
Be here all night.
Not worry. Thank you.
You did this one last time.
All right. Same as the senior center, the town hall, school admin. We've met thirty-seven times. We produced a video of this building, of the Roman House, we've gone through to show the deficiencies in it. We've held three community forums with this and all this information also is available on our town website.
And, and we also, we also did site visits to other town halls. With, with building committee members and department heads that wanted to see, you know, what a modern vault looked like or, you know, what, what does a modern meeting room look like. You know, this is a big jump for Wilmington, so we wanted them to see what they could have. And when they were making their requests, think outside the box, don't think like today, but think like tomorrow. Sometimes you have to see tomorrow to do that. So we had some pretty successful meetings. And, and, and I don't think any, any of the department heads overreached. Everyone pretty much asked for what they need. And as we had indicated in our last meeting, I think just about every space in here has room for one person if a department grows. So they won't be squished in there. There is the potential for long-term growth.
Multiple, you know, multiple department heads went with us. The clerk got to see that rolling filing system in the vault.
He fell in love.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be spectacular for us. We'll get away from all that shelving. It'll maximize our space. Bring us up into the current century.
Yes. Great.
Same, same outreach. We, we have produced some recently on this project related to the CM since that was the, the new news. And, you know, it's just hard to, to produce things without, without data. I expect we'll produce one at the end of DD, like we did with the senior center. And then there'll be a kind of a lull till we get towards, towards bidding.
Right. We had one drafted. I kind of, I've shot that one down.
He shot, he shot down.
It was, it was basically on our CM, our construction manager at risk. It kind of went into detail. It didn't give a lot of information about the project. So June seventh is our next meeting. We're gonna talk a lot about design development. That'll be coming in. We've done the first floor. Now multiple floors will come into play. That'll give us more information. So once the committee has seen that and it goes out to the public, then we can do that newsletter. That'll bring us up current.
So I guess we didn't get that one out the door.
And that's what we have.
Yep.
One simple question.
A simple one?
Yes. Oh, he's got his pen out. You're anticipating the start of construction in March?
Yes.
What effect is that gonna have on the parking area for the high school?
So one of the things we did when we interviewed the CMs, it was interesting to see that all four of them seemed to think they had an understanding of the town green and, and the, the need for the parking. They, they all touched on it, but Consigli really touched on it. And they showed us plans where, how they were gonna protect parking during construction and how they were gonna keep the site clean. And how they, you know, that this was the front door of the community and they wanted to make sure that the fence line didn't have trash pile up on it. And things of that nature. So we, we know that we have the room for parking throughout the entire construction of this project. They may jump around a little bit as we're doing areas. But we, we think we have a sequence that will minimize that. The Fourth of July celebration will go on as usual this summer. And we'll work with the contractor to hopefully see if we can't make sure that that's seamless too. It will take a lot of lay down area to build this building. This is a big building. And, you know, three of the, three of the contract, contractors didn't think it was possible to have the July fourth celebration for one year during construction. And one seemed to think that there was a way that we could do it. And we hide the one that we think is the way we can do it. So we act really conscious to what the neighbors are gonna be doing. We will be doing individual newsletters to the streets around the project to update them on what is coming, what to expect. You know, concrete trucks are gonna get counted on, those type of things. So we're gonna try to minimize the unknown to the neighbors, but, you know, we're gonna do, we're gonna do the best we can. We just have a long way to go before we, we get to that point.
Okay. It's in the details. It's in the planning. So once we have them on board, we're gonna have our construction meetings. We'll, we will go over before anything even happens where these fences are gonna be laid out, where traffic is going to be entering, where all the construction workers will be parking. So that'll be laid out and if we do it correctly, it shouldn't inconvenience anybody there.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions? I'll start down here.
Yeah, just, so the start is projected to be March twenty-four. When, when conclusion?
We think about eighteen, eighteen to twenty months on that project. It will depend on weather and, and availability of certain things.
My, my concern, as you know, is the Fourth of July. I, I don't know how we can continue to have it there during the construction period personally. Only because sometimes curiosity takes, takes hold. And when you're having an event there and you're having areas that are cordoned off and you have staging, some people may get curious to try to see if they can get through the fence. And that bothers, it, it kind of worries me for not only vandalism, but injury. So that, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm more inclined to, to think that the Fourth of July may have to take a hiatus for, for two years or find another location, but that's.
So I think in the planning, you're right. It will be an attractive nuisance. Somebody might want to see that. So again, it will have to be in the planning, see how it comes up. And we should know, like I, I was speaking to Pachiro the other day, we've already started talking about this. So we'll know well in advance how that's gonna play out. But one of the things that our CM had talked about is maybe having the opportunity because at the end of the summer, twenty twenty-five, this building should be wrapping up. This may be an opportunity to, to kind of showcase this new building. Fencing starts to come down. People can actually see this. It might not be one hundred percent complete, but now there it is. Like we did with the high school, start giving tours of this new facility. Hasn't opened yet. We haven't moved everybody in yet, but this is, this is your building. This is your new town hall. So again, it'll all be in the planning, you know.
Any further questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
I would just add, I, I think it's, you know, one of the virtues of this particular firm is that they were all, all of the firms that bid on the CM project were certainly technically seemed to be up to the task. I think from my perspective, one of the things that put Consigliya above was their apparent recognition of the sensitivity of this area. It's not only the kind of heart and soul of the town, so to speak, because there's so many things that are going on there, community events, but also such close proximity to the neighbors on School Street, Powder House, Drury Lane and so on. So they seem to recognize that. And I think there's gonna really be a lot of emphasis put on just the logistics and, and how we plan for that. You know, the Fourth of July, certainly to the extent we can, we want to see that go forward. I think it's, you know, whether it can go forward in the current form that it is, I think is gonna be a real challenge just physically, space wise, but, but we'll certainly work to try to minimize the impact.
Absolutely. To Selectman Kyra's point, we'll have to take a hard look at that.
Right.
Any further questions for Dan? Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Of course, and June seventh is the town hall, school admin. And then we'll see you.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Thank you both. All right. Our last appointment is the reorganization of the board. As we all know, Judy O'Connell was the former chair. She didn't run for reelection, so I have been filling in that role. So now I'd like to take this opportunity this evening to appoint a new chair. So I'd like to open it up to my colleagues here. And if anybody has a recommendation, a nomination for somebody for themselves, I'd like to open it up. So if anybody would like to, to speak on this, if anybody.
Chair, I'd like to throw a nominate Mr. De Palma.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to second his nomination.
All right. Mr. Kyra?
For discussion, I guess.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say. Mr. Kyra had anything to say? All right, I'm gonna open that up for, I'm sorry?
That works for me.
Okay.
If he's so willing.
Yeah, of course. So I, I will open it up to discussion now if anybody has any further. I, I support that as well.
I accept the nomination. That comes with the pay raise, right?
Yeah, yeah. All right. So I would like to, or do I, can I have a motion? Do we need to vote on that?
Second?
All in favor of Mr. De Palma being the new chair of the select board? All right, unanimous.
Thank you.
It takes effect now.
Sorry, no raise, Gary. On the board a month and I already get a new neighbor.
I know, right? Me too.
Thank you to everyone. I appreciate it. I hope I can do the job as well as Mrs. Maselli, Mr. Bendel, me and Mr. Kyra. No. Where are we? Communications?
Under Communications, we have memo from Brian Perry, the finance director. And he is noting that we have a, a one-year statehouse note that will be coming due on beginning of June. You'll recall back in two thousand eighteen, at the annual town meeting, the community authorized two point five million dollars for the construction of a new water tank, which is located on Nassau Ave. Since that time, the board has been authorizing one-year statehouse notes. And again, this is the recommendation going forward. The expectation is next year, when we have to do a borrowing to finance the town school admin and the senior center, that we would look to group this in as well in terms of long-term financing. But in the interim, the recommendation is that this statehouse note be issued again. There was a, a bid process that took place on this. And so Unibank is the, came in with the best rate at four point four percent. It is not required that the board take a vote on this, but it will require at least three of the five members of the board to sign off on some borrowing documents. Next, under Communication is a memo from Thomas Gibson, who's the chair of the Middlesex Community, Middlesex County Retirement Board. You'll recall a few months ago, there was a request made with regard to special act, chapter two sixty-nine of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two, which provided for a one-time increase adjustment in the COLA for retirees from three percent to five percent. In order for that to happen, it required a vote of the respective boards of selectmen. And in this case, the requisite number of communities have voted in favor. So that will take effect. And as a consequence, the, the net effect will be a one percent increase in the unfunded liability. And the plan is to begin paying for that adjustment in fiscal two thousand twenty-six. This next communication is from me with regard to consideration for transfer of environmental cases to KP. And I just note here that the cases involved really are the Olin Superfund Site, the New England Transrail and Wilmington-Woolburn Intermodal, as well as Maple Meadow. Landfill, Mark Rich from KP has indicated that his firm can certainly represent the town on these matters. I think he also just notes that careful consideration should be given with respect to a, a transfer, only because there's such a long history with the Olin site. There will be a significant amount of knowledge transfer required in addition to certainly the file transfer. Also, there's an expectation that the two, if there was to be a transfer, the two firms at some point would need to have spend some time together just having conversations about that transfer of knowledge. Separately, there's also under Communications, a, an email from Mark Rich on this same topic. And he reiterates some of these same points. Notes the complexity of superfund sites. Again, his firm is prepared to take this on. You know, they, his approach would be to put together a team of individuals that would work on this. He notes some of their, the firm's experience in, in dealing with superfund sites and other communities. And then this next memo is again from me to the board, covering some of the same points or similar points that were previously talked about, noting that one of the things that Mark Rich has indicated that would be important to him and his firm if there was a transfer be very clear in terms of the scope of work. To this point, for the last many years now, it's, you know, it's been largely a monitoring role, certainly staying up to speed on the various documents that have been generated by EPA and Olin's consultants, also having conversations with the board about consideration for action, potential action or claims to be filed. He would just certainly want to make sure that there's clarity on, on that process. Next, under Communication is an, an email from Melanie Morash. She is the Superfund Project Manager at EPA. Just announcing the consent decree that has recently been entered into. Department of Justice as well as EPA has been involved along with the American Biltwright, Nora M., Agro LLC, Olin and Stepan Company. Nora M., Agro LLC, Olin, and Stepan Company, to the tune of $48 million to address soil, sediment, and surface water contamination. There's also $400,000 that would be slated to reimburse EPA for some of its costs and also for its ongoing oversight. Separately from that was an announcement that EPA made about the cleanup. I would just note that the Department of Justice has issued a comment period, 30-day comment period, and I've already had Verdantis taking a look at that, and there is an expectation that we may offer a comment on that. And then finally, under Communication, is a letter to Verizon. You'll recall at the last meeting, there was discussion about a pole relocation. I just note in the communication here that this is not the first time that Verizon has come to the Board after having made a change in pole location, citing the law here, Mass. General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, specifically establishes the process, and also just noting the importance that by providing this notice in advance, it gives us an opportunity to make sure that none of our infrastructure, whether it's water lines or sewer lines, are going to be impacted by this, and certainly things like site visibility are preserved.
Mr. Chair, question on that letter. I wasn't at the last meeting, and I know that this was brought up at that time, but do we have, to the Town Manager, do we have any way of... Is there some bylaw or a policy that will allow us to fine these businesses for putting up a pole without coming first to get approval? Do you know?
No, I actually posed the question in an email to Town Council as to what recourse we have, and unfortunately, he noted, I guess this is not uncommon amongst communities, and it is a very difficult situation to deal with. There is... I'd have to check our bylaws. I don't know offhand if there's any bylaw on the books that would impose a fine, and I guess even if there is such a bylaw, I'd want to check with Council on that, because my general understanding is utilities like Verizon, for various reasons, tend to be immune to those kind of things.
Yeah, if you could, I'd love for you to check on that, because I'd like to impose a fine on them, and, you know, first-time fine, second-time fine. I mean, you know, they just... They've done this before. It's time to let it stop, so...
Kyra, so you know from the last meeting that that was requested also to the Town Manager to look into any fines or any other penalties that we can issue.
All right. Under Board to Consider, the first item under Board to Consider is a request from Khalid Hesmile, Tony's Ice Cream, to obtain a Hawk and Pedal license. Unfortunately, in this circumstance, he has not met with the Health Director. There's certain documentation he needs to provide there, and that has not been provided to this point, so the Board really has two options. You could either authorize the Hawk and Pedal license pending his... The approval by Shelley Newhouse, the Health Director. I would just note that the Board's next meeting is June 12th. The beach, Silver Lake Beach, as you probably know, opens on June 10th. This particular vendor has been licensed to be the provider at the beach, so, you know, the prospect is that they obviously can't sell ice cream.
I'll make a motion to table until our next meeting, until he gets the requirement documents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? With discussion?
I'll second for discussion. I have no discussion. I just wanted to open it up to the Board.
All those in favor of denying the permit at the... Excuse me. Not denying.
Tabled.
Tabled until the next meeting.
This... Until next meeting? All those in favor? All those opposed? Tabled to the next meeting.
All right, and the next Board to Consider is the appointment of a Select Board designee to the Economic Development Committee. Select Board Member West had expressed interest in serving on this committee.
Mr. Chairman, basically, I had spoken with the Chair, Mike Champeau, and got an idea of what's involved, and so, you know, I'm interested in taking that position as a Select Board rep, if the Board... If that's the desire of the Board.
Do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed?
All right, next, under Board to Consider, is the appointment of Special Counsel for the Olin Superfund Site, New England Trans-Rail, Wilmington-Wilburn Industrial, and Maple Meadow Landfill. You'll recall that the appointment came up a couple of meetings ago. The contracts for both Town Council and Special Counsel run from July 1 to June 30, so just bring this back before the Board again in terms of how you want to proceed.
Discussion?
I'll start discussion, if that's okay. Basically, what we looked... The Town Manager had sent us the last three... Excuse me.
Sorry to interrupt you. I believe we need to have a motion before we can have discussion.
Okay. Do I have a motion to... Let me figure out what we're motioning here. An appointment of Special Counsel for the Olin Superfund Site, New England Trans-Rail, Wilmington-Wilburn Industrial, and Maple Meadows Landfill. Do I have a motion to accept?
So the Board would want to either make a motion to continue with the services of Brooks and Durensis, or to transition these responsibilities to KP Law. Those, I think, would be your options.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we keep current counsel.
Is there... You need a second?
I need you second.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Basically, on my end, just so everyone knows, and again, I'm new to the Board, but I've been in the audience, I've listened to conversations, and, you know, things going on over the years. And I know the Town Manager gave us a rundown of the legal cost that we've been spending, both for Brooks and Durensis and KP Law. And it looks like over the last three years, it looks like in fiscal year '21, excuse me, we paid about $27,000 and change to Brooks and Durensis. Fiscal year '22, little over $10,000. Fiscal year '23, as of May, was $9,200. And I think in the current warrant, there was another $1,500 or so. So it kind of brings us up to a little over $10,000, and I think that's probably, if I'm not mistaken, Jeff, that's probably the last bill of the fiscal year '23.
That's to this point, yes.
Yeah, so that... So if it's the $9,200 plus another $1,400 or thereabouts, you're looking at about $10.6, thereabouts. So basically, looking at the hourly rates, Brooks and Durensis, it seems to me that in fiscal year '21, just looking at their billing, and again, some of that's probably admin and stuff like that, but if I was just to do simple math and say $360 divided by the 27, comes up to 76 hours in fiscal year '21. The $10,002 divided by the $360, and again, I know that some of that's going to not build it at $360 probably, and I think I'm correct, Jeff, so some of that would be admin and supplies and stuff like that, so there'd be some cut out.
I think most of it is the... For Dan's services.
Okay. But it would be 28 hours, and fiscal year '23, based on the $9,200, it was 25 hours. So if you add the other 1,200, you're probably looking at about 28 hours of time. So it seems to me that, you know, for the extra $60 an hour we're paying for Dan, I think the transition cost would probably outweigh, because even I looked at the numbers, and I'm saying, if we looked at the difference between the $360 and the $300, in fiscal year '21, we paid a difference of $4,500, $4,600. Fiscal year '22, $1,800. And this year, fiscal year '1, fiscal year '23, $1,500 with the billings to May, so it's probably about two grand difference or so. So it looks like, you know, like this year, if we're paying two grand over what we would have paid KP Law, the transition cost would probably be more than that, and I think at this stage, it's probably behoove us to stay where we're at if we're... Especially if KP now, you're saying, is looking at a team of attorneys to review the environmental. I don't know what, at $300 an hour, what's the transition for, you know, if we were to transfer role to KP Law from Brooks and Durensis.
So clearly, there's going to be some increased costs, at least in the short term, because as Mark Rich noted, I believe in his email, for the last many years now, as communications come in, whether it's from Olin's consultants or EPA, that information is forwarded to Mark. They have it on file. I think he, you know, may skim it, but doesn't do any significant work on the premise that we're paying a firm to look at that in more detail, so there's, you know, no sense of double billing. So while he does have some of that information in his hands, so to speak, there's going to be... He or whoever he assigns this to is going to have to get up to speed on, you know, all of the work that has gone on for the last 35 or 40 years. Obviously, some of it, you know, the more recent work is going to be the most timely, but there's definitely going to need to be someone that gets up to speed on what the issues are at the moment, and is able to develop their own opinions as to how to advise the Board going forward. So there's that cost of one attorney or more, you know, one or more attorneys looking at the documents, and then there'll need to be some amount of time, and I can't estimate this, and it doesn't sound like Dan or Mark are able to estimate this, but there'll be some amount of time required for the two attorneys to have consultation in terms of, you know, information that's important to exchange. And so at that point, then there's $660 an hour for their collective time spent. Again, as to how long, how many hours that takes, it's not clear to me, but I guess long and the short of it is, there'll be kind of a surge in legal costs for some period of time for this transition to go forward, and then, once that transition is complete, then, you know, the process would, you know, go back to, in this case, $300 an hour. You know, I think one of the things that Mark commented on is, again, just being... Unless there's concerns about the work that's been done by Dan Deutsch and the firm, just be mindful of the costs associated with transition. I would say, you know, the one area that does give me pause is, as I understand it, Dan is the one person within his firm that has this information, has obviously advised the town now for 20-plus years. You know, he indicated he has no plans to move on. He's, you know, planning to be there for the foreseeable future, but, you know, I suppose, you know, one value of having an arrangement where there's multiple attorneys that at least has a working knowledge of the situation is that if one person decides to retire or move on or whatever it may be, the transition in that circumstance may be less problematic.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to that point itself, would it be possible to get something from Dan Deutsch to indicate to us, so many months out of his potential retirement? I guess what I'm saying, that way there, we can prepare that, you know, he's going to retire, you know, within 12 months, and that way, we can start to transition to KP to say, you know, we got to get you, you know, in the know. I'm not saying that KP's not in the know, because they get the paperwork, but if we had that, because you bring up a good point, Mr. Hull, that he's not planning to retire, but gee, someday he's going to, and it may be, you know, you know, as part of his contract, can we put a clause in there that you must inform the town of Wilmington, you know, you have to give us 12 months' notice of retirement? This way here, it gives us an opportunity to make a transition, because I, for one, you know, and I know Mr. Bendel has said it a number of times, and I have as well, I think it's time that it come under one roof, but it's difficult to do that when you have a person who has that type of institutional knowledge, you know, and it seems like a lot of these things may be coming to some sort of a conclusion, and even though it may be coming to some sort of a conclusion, there's still going to be long-lasting oversight, you know? So we saw this article, you gave us $48 million to do the cleanup at Olin. Well, once they had $48 million and they do that cleanup, and we don't know how many years that's going to be, there's going to be oversight forever. I mean, I'll be, you know, gone.
We'll be retired.
So we're going to need whoever that attorney is at the time to continue that oversight. Same thing with... When's the landfill going to... The Maple Meadow, when is that finish up? And certainly, the other redevelopment of the Olin property, you know, once that's completed, then that's completed, but... So I think, you know, it's difficult for me, as much as I want to put it under one roof, as much as I think it should be under one roof, under KP, I'm inclined to stay with the arrangement we have now, but I would like to, you know, make mention. What if he does retire? We should know ahead of time.
Some form of copy.
So that we can make that comfortable transition. It may cost the town a little bit of money, but I think it needs to be done. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the cost, too. I mean, I know this predates me going on to this Board, that there was going to be, you know, those are for some consolidation under one roof, you know, and I don't know why it was never put forward or whatever, but the cost of it, at some point, we're going to have to do it. I agree with a lot of what Mr. Kyra said, and if we do move forward with this, I agree it should be retirement or leaving of his firm, because it's kind of scary, and I know this happens a lot, obviously, in law firms with these long cases, but it's a little scary that, you know, he's the holder of all this information, you know? So at some point, we're going to have to put up that transitional money. You know, to be honest with you, I'm a little indifferent to it, in the sense that we're going to have to spend that money at some point, and rates are just going to continue to go up, so we should just kind of rip the Band-Aid off and do it, part of me says. But right now, I'm more concerned that he's the only one with all that institutional knowledge, and I think, you know, that that's a big issue. And I think, you know, that, that's a big issue in, in some sense, you know. So it was a good thing to bring up. But I do think, you know, I, I think we're just kind of, we're kicking the rock down the road if we don't do it now. And it could cost us more. So I think we've got to kind of look at, at both sides of it. Because at some point, even, you know, even if Dan, you know, were to retire in ten years, just use a number, you know, we're going to have to transition at that time. So, you know, it's, you know, part of me says, let's just do it now and get it over with and, and incur the cost. You know, but I do like Kevin's idea, if we are going to continue with them, that we put the clause in there of him, you know, if he's going to leave the firm at any time or choose to retire, we need a notice, because if not, I, I can't be on board with that. Because we'll be at much more of a cost having to transition and not get all the information we probably need were he to leave prior, without, you know, letting us know. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you. I, you know, I fully expect to be on the losing end of this vote, which is, which is totally fine. And I won't try to even lobby anybody to, to join me in that effort. But, you know, I said it a year ago that I would, if we were in this position come today, that I, that I won't support this. So I'm going to stick by that. And, and the reason being is, you know, you know, I was here five years ago and I was promised a short transition period and that hasn't happened. So I'm a little disappointed in that and I think a lot of good points have been made. Certainly respect everybody's position here. But for me, I just keep finding, you know, replaying in my head, you know, how long is a short transition period? So I guess that definition is unique to everyone. But for me, I can't support this motion knowing that, you know, five years ago we were promised a short transition and now here we are faced with a sixth year and that hasn't happened. So I will not be supporting this.
I just want to say a couple of things on this. At first, I was leaning towards Mr. Bendel's thinking on this. And then I started looking at it a little more and I was concerned with the cost of what it would cost the town in transition. And also I started thinking about the institutional knowledge that he has. And I felt that at this time, I believe we're in such a critical stage of, of these projects that I prefer us to stay as we are right now and have some kind of an understanding or a written agreement with Mr. Deutsch that if, as Mr. Kyra has said, that if he is planning a retire, retiring within any period of time he advises the town as such, so we can start a transition period with KP Law or if it's extended down the road with whatever legal counsel that we have. So I would support this right now. But I would request that the, I would request that we bring it back up for consideration or a review in a short period of time to see if that Attorney Deutsch would give us that statement that he would notify us within a, a year, I think Mr. Kyra was requesting, within a year. If he felt that he'd be uncomfortable with it, I'd ask that the, this be brought up again and we look at the transition.
Mr. Chair, I, I'd also go with Ms. Maselli said, that our separation from service or, or he, you know, he may go to a different law, not just retirement, but you brought up a good point. And I think that we should wait until the June twelfth meeting, since it's June thirtieth is the deadline, to make that determination if we're supporting this or not based upon this new clause that we're putting in place. If he doesn't, if he doesn't want to do that, you know, I may reconsider keeping him and just do the, like you say, rip the Band-Aid and, and make the transition happen now, as far as I'm concerned.
If I may, I was actually just going to say the same thing, that we put it off. So I'm going to make a motion to table this to our next meeting with the condition that Mr. Hull go to Mr. Deutsch and the law firm stating that we'd like that in the clause and if he would be open to that if we were to renew.
Jim, why don't I withdraw? We have an active motion in. Why don't I withdraw my motion?
Yep.
So I'll withdraw my motion. I don't know if that needs to be voted on.
No, let's draw the second.
Okay. And I'd like to put in my motion as previously stated.
Okay, we don't have to vote on the withdrawal of the motion.
No.
Okay.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to table this until June twelfth, pending the conversation that's had with Mr. Deutsch about a one-year notice.
But we need, but, and then we'll, we have to make a decision on the twelfth, obviously.
Second for discussion.
Mrs. Maselli made the motion and Mr. West is seconding it with discussion.
Well, my only comment is, is that I, do, does any of us give a year's notice to retire from our jobs? I think that might be an extended period of time. I don't know if six months, and again, I, I get what you're saying. I don't want to, I don't want to see him just say, hey, I'm gone the end of the week. But I don't know if a year, I mean, that's a whole contract. I mean, is that?
It's happened.
I think he's an attorney. He'll come back. Let's see what he comes back with and, you know. I will say I'm, I'm not in favor of renewing if we have to vote tonight because I think we're going to spend more down the road and, you know, I just, that's just the way I feel about it. But I will take this as a second option. I will consider it if he.
Certainly, certainly the conversation, I'll, I'll have the conversation with him if he says, well, you know, and I, it would seem to me it should be framed in the way that if there's going to be, if he anticipates a separation in employment, whether that's retirement, moving on to another firm or whatever the circumstance, rather than specifying certain things, separation from the firm within twelve months, that, you know, we be notified. If he says, well, I'm really, that's unrealistic. I can give you six months or whatever, whatever he might be, then, you know, I can bring that back to the board and then the board can decide whether that makes sense or not. I think the point is well-made that at some point in time, there will presumably need to be a transition because, you know, he's going to work for a period of time and then either move to another firm or retire. You know, I guess the other consideration here is, at the moment, you know, we, we've certainly, without getting into details, obviously, but there's been discussions about how to proceed. It, it would be better, if, if there is a, if there is a transition that is going to be made, it would be better to do it in advance of any claims being filed. Because obviously that creates a whole nother set of circumstances if you've got someone pursuing.
Well, we have a motion on the, on the floor and seconded that we're going to be requesting from Attorney Deutsch separation, retirement, but to notify the, the town prior to, by a twelve-month period. Let's leave it at that. Let's see what they, he says. And we're bringing it back on, we're bringing it back to the board on the twelfth. And at the twelfth, if it's not to the liking of the board, then we make, or we can just make our decision at that time. Is everyone comfortable with this? Okay, can we get a vote then? We're voting.
In favor?
In favor.
Okay.
To table.
To table.
Yes. This is.
My motion.
This is true.
Yeah, this is Lil's motion.
To table. Till the twelfth with discussion. You all have discussion.
And with the latitude to, to give to the town manager the discretion or the latitude, if it's not twelve months, six months.
Right.
That's Frank said, right?
Right, that'll be brought back for the twelfth.
Yeah.
So you have four in favor and any opposed? One opposed.
Stand opposed?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bendel opposed.
Okay. Next is a Board, Board to Consider Request of Julia Burke Theater on the Fence to Use Swain Green in the municipal parking lot for yard sale fundraiser on Saturday, July eighth, two thousand twenty-three, from eight AM to four PM. I would note that that, their startup or their setup is going to be from eight to nine. And then the yard sale itself will be from nine to three and then an hour of shutdown and, and wrap-up.
Is there a motion?
Move to grant the request.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Grant his request unanimously.
A Board to Consider Request of Julie Blackley, Communications Manager at Reading Municipal Light, for RMLD to host an electric car show at the municipal parking lot on Middlesex Ave on Sunday, August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from ten AM to one PM. She did indicate that she's been in touch with a representative from the farmer's market and they're okay with this. This was done last year. And she's also requesting that the board authorize signs similar to what's been done in the past, two signs on the Church Street side, two side, signs on the Middlesex side, just noting that this will be coming up.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? With discussion, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Now.
Public comment?
Public comments, correct. Any public comments? Anybody wants to speak? Okay, no one's here for public comments. Now announcements.
Yes, sir.
Two, if I may. First of all, I want to congratulate the class of two thousand twenty-three from Shawshank Tech and Wilmington High School, which includes one of our colleague's sons. So congratulations to all and good luck. And also, very briefly, I know it's going to come up under important dates, but I want to draw everybody's attention to the meeting that takes place on May thirty-first, that, that the high school regarding the MSBA project. I hope people will tune in or attend this meeting. I, I find it to be very concerning that we're having this meeting and I'm concerned about the prospect of changing course at the current time. So I would encourage folks to tune in or join us on May thirty-first where we'll receive an update on the MSBA project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Any other?
Yeah, I had talked with Bonnie Smith. She's the Chair of the Historical Commission. And under important dates is the, is an event at the Hearden Tavern on June eleventh from two to four PM. And she just wanted to make sure that the board was invited and hopes that they can participate. Basically, what it is, is that it's the fiftieth anniversary of the town purchase of the tavern building and the tavern, tavern ground. So they're going to have some guest speakers there and I guess there's going to be some light refreshments, maybe, you know. And just basically, you know, tours of the tavern, but, you know, she, she couldn't make it tonight, but she asked me if I'd just speak on behalf of it.
Thank you, Mr. West.
Mr. Chair, just for my fellow board members, the Memorial Day activities, I know Monday's our parade. I will not be walking, needing a hip and a knee replacement. So I'll meet you at the, the veterans cemetery area.
Thank you. Any other announcements? New business? Any new business?
Chair, just one, if I could. First of all, congratulations again. I don't expect an answer right now, but I do want to pose the question to you for a future date. If you could outline what you believe will be the process that you want to have for the town manager's evaluation, which will be coming up just about three meetings from now in a very busy month of July. So I wondered if you could let us know at, you know, in due time.
Present that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman. A couple of other things. One, I was wondering, we've, I've been driving by the, for lack of a better term, I guess it's called the Moth House. And it seems like there's been a lot of construction work or something going on. I don't know if the town manager could elaborate on anything going on over there, not to put you on the spot, but.
Well, see, I, I don't know. I've never heard of the Moth House.
This is the big garage next to the Congregational Church.
Oh, okay.
It's been called several things, Moth House, Bug House.
Never heard that, okay. I understand why, but, yeah.
I don't know if, I don't know if the town has an official name that they, that it goes by.
Yeah, I, I don't know the historic name. It is, it's been a building that's been in that location for many years. Public Buildings has been doing some work. The doors, wooden doors needed to be replaced. There's also some wood slats that are going to be replaced. I think some boards around the base. And then Mr. Hooper has made arrangements with the House of Correction to have the painters have, have folks from the House of Correction come in and do some painting there.
Okay, like I said, it's just, it's been like a, kind of a quasi-construction site for a little bit, so I was just kind of curious. And the other thing is said, is there any way we can talk to the state about the lines on Main Street? And in some, in some cases, the lines are pretty non-existent. Like if you look at the stretch, say, from Market Basket over to Church Street, you know, mainly like, especially like along that stretch where the, where the train tracks are, it's just, it seems like, you know, because you've got two lanes on one side, one lane and the other, you get the double line, you know, and you can't see that a lot and you, and you can't see the separation of the two lanes.
Well, I believe at one time, there was discussions of about doing away with the, on thirty-eight, the hash, hash, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why that's there.
And, and I believe Representative Robinson was supposed to be working on that and we haven't heard anything in quite a while. I know it was a lively discussion.
Yep.
When it came up, but I, maybe I recommend it to Townsend, Mr. Robinson a letter and ask him what's going on with it. Because I know they were going to do away with the hash marks, even though that's still going to stay a left, I believe it was, still going to stay a left, left light. But they were going to do with the hash marks to make it a little smoother through there, weren't they?
My recollection is that there was a discussion about that. So if, if the, if we were talking about the same place, as you're heading south towards Clark Street. Is that the one you're talking about where those hash mark? Those are designed to get people who are going straight into the far-right lane. And I believe that when this discussion took place, there were some concerns raised by, and I don't remember whether it was Jamie McGoldy or our Public Works folks about some safety issues there with doing away with the hash marks. So I, I, I don't know that there was a definitive direction on that.
No, but they should have, he should have responded to us.
I, I, I think it was, as I recall, I think I brought it up as well, is that the left-hand turn into the Savers parking lot wasn't working.
Oh, that was the other.
That was the, and the sight line on it from cars coming, they, they take their, their life in their hands when they try to turn left. And I think we had, didn't we have a DOT look at that and they said that they could make it a, like a segregated lane, but, but we'd have to widen some areas or take away a lane. And it, we, we said we would just monitor that light to see if it continued to work properly. And that, I don't know, I still have a, a real difficult time thinking that that, that light going left and over at Richmond, you know, it needs to somehow work a little longer for the people turning. But I think that's what the discussion was on.
It was, it start, if I'm not mistaken, it started at o'clock and then it progressed to Savers, excuse me, and then turning on to one-twenty-nine. That the lights, if I'm not mistaken, it was, the lights are too short.
They are. They're very short, yeah.
And.
Yeah, exactly.
We used to stand there during the election season, holding a sign and being very afraid of people trying to turn either left into the CVS parking lot or left into Savers.
Right, right.
Down, just the, the signaling. And I know you need to keep, keep traffic moving, but.
But they can cycle it a lot better.
All right, so I will follow up. There was a gentleman from Mass DOT. I forget his name now, but I'm sure we can identify who that was.
He provided us a study on it, but I forget what it exactly said.
All right, so I'll follow up on that.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman. If I could add to important dates, on the 14th of June, which is otherwise known as Flag Day, the Wilmington Minutemen are gonna be doing a flag retirement ceremony at 6:30 p.m. at the Minutemen Headquarters, which is directly behind the Harndon Tavern. And the, certainly the board and the public are invited.
Thank you. Any other announcements or new business? Let's see, we're into new business.
Important dates.
Important dates.
Senior Center Building Committee is May 24th. Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. May 27th, Decoration of Graves Wildwood Cemetery, 8:00 a.m. Decoration of Parks, Squares and Monuments. May 28th, Rededication of Parks, Squares and Monuments. Memorial Shrine at St. Thomas Villanova, 1:00 p.m. Veterans Monument at Town Common, 1:15 p.m. March 29th, Memorial Day Parade, 10:00 a.m. Memorial Day Ceremony, Wildwood Cemetery Veterans Lot, 11:00 a.m. May 31st, the Wilmington High School, 159 Church Street, Room 1-062, 6:00 p.m. Joint Meeting with the School Committee, Select Board, Wildwood School Building Committee and Finance Committee regarding Wildwood School MSBA Project. June 1st is Shawshin Tech graduation. June 4th, the Wilmington High School graduation. June 3rd is a fishing derby, Town Beach at Silver Lake, 8:00 a.m. June 7th is the Town Hall School Admin Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. June 10, Townwide Yard Sale, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. June 11th is Farmer's Market. They begin their season, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Also, June 11, Harndon Tavern, 50th Anniversary Celebration, 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Select Board Meeting on June 12, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Hull. Now turn the meeting over to Mr. Bendel for salute to service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And tonight, the board would like to recognize Mr. Tom Pizzara, who served in the United States Army from October of 1954, being honorably discharged in September of 1957. Tom spent most of his service overseas as a combat photographer during the Korean War, where he earned the Good Conduct Medal. After his service, he married his wife Carol, from whom they shared over 60 years of marriage before her passing in 2022. Tom and Carol lived in Wilmington for more than 45 years and raised their two children here. Tom was a staple at the Fund on the Fourth Celebration and the recipient of the coveted Good Guy Award. Tom was a 35-year volunteer at WCTV and was instrumental in setting up the new studio on Waldham Street. Always a proud veteran, Tom was always at Veterans Services events as he's done an excellent job preserving the department's history through videotaping all of our events. Thank you, Mr. Pizzara, for your service to our country and to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
In favor?
Have a good evening.
I'm sorry, before board members leave, I just have a few things for you to sign.
Stay safe.